We're going to enter the regular meeting and we're going to take a break as we move upstairs and get set up. We'll start the meeting around eight P M. The woman that helped me definitely knew, definitely knew her way around them. With highlighting, highlighting.
It's a change of signer form. I've done this like fifteen times already.
Can't zoom it in, zoom it out. Any time in the... There's only three of us. Oh, now you're just, now you're in. Now you're in. Like out in the call here. All right, we're just doing a fixing our cameras and we'll do a quick sound check and get started. Can, can anyone hear me out there virtually?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome everyone to the March seventh, twenty twenty-three B O T open session. We appreciate your patience. I know we had pushed it back to seven thirty and then we pushed it to eight less very, you know, at seven thirty. We appreciate your patience. We had very good, important existential talks about water rights and we appreciate your patience. That being said, we are, are we ready on your end?
We are ready.
Okay. So we'll call this meeting to order at eight oh three.
So just really quick for clarification, the meeting was already called to order.
Okay.
We're just starting the irregular.
So we're back in the regular. Do you need to do a roll now or?
I can if you'd like to confirm everyone is present.
Either that or I could just tell everyone out there what's your present preference.
Um.
What's the norm?
We can just do, go ahead and do roll call, just for sake.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor Billy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mahold.
Here.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Here.
Trustee Severs.
Here.
Trustee Mountain.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Here.
And please note for the record that trustee Corvallon is absent.
It's her birthday. Thanks, thanks everyone. So, so we are going to move right into consent agenda. We have, I think it was, yes, nine items, many of which have been approved already on budget and we're just doing the final approval here in consent. Are there any?
Mayor Billy, you do have Casey online and I would love if you, maybe had an opportunity for her to introduce herself to the board.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, Casey. Please do. Introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. But hi, I'm looking forward to getting involved with ProSAB and getting to know the, the board more. As I recently moved to Netherlands in, in the, or the Netherlands area on Magnolia back in September. So thank you so much for having me and I look forward to helping the town as best as I can.
Thanks, Casey. Thanks for stepping forward and getting involved.
Thanks.
Any clarifying questions on the nine consent agenda items? If not, any motions?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
When you're ready.
Yep. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Congrats, Casey. Thank you so much.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Casey. So now we'll move into public comment on non-agenda items. We'll limit folks to three minutes per person. Just identify yourself and your relationship to Netherlands and tell us what you would like to tell us about non-agenda items only.
I have one.
Yes, sir. Wait, this, you need to actually go there.
It would really happen under other business unless you want to come up and speak as a citizen. Okay, I would save yours for other business.
Anyone public comment on non-agenda items? Now we will move on to informational items and what we're going to talk about and learn about Neder days. Nikki?
Hi, it's been a minute since I've seen you guys, so it's glad, glad to be here. So I wanted to talk to you about Neder days. That's an event that we've been planning with the help of Stephanie Andelman. And Miranda, Peter and myself have been on this planning kind of committee for several months now. Neder days is the event that we are, the idea was to try and bring Netherlands back to Netherlands, an event for locals to celebrate our, our, our area, our local businesses specifically. And not to really replace frozen dead guy days at all. It's not meant to be anything like frozen dead guy days. It is meant to just be a celebration of our own community. Neder days is, has a variety of different activities that each different business will be hosting. The Parks Department, your, your very own friendly Parks, Parks Department is going to be hosting the sled races. We're building a course down First Street and we'll have a team, teams of up to two, or it could be a single racer race down First Street and then we'll open this little sled course to, to the public. It's a kid friendly course, so you can bring your young ones if you want. We're thinking that kids that are too young would ride on a parent's lap. The sleds were donated by Ace Hardware. So the, each, like I said, each different business will be hosting its own little separate event in the B and F parking lot, T, T Bo's, that B and F Caribou Shopping Center will be hosting a barn dance on Friday night with a tent and hay bales and, and just a, a very friendly barn dance, no alcohol, that kind of thing. If you, if this event is, if you want to, if you want to drink, you go to the bars like, like you do. And also on Friday night, we'll have a silent disco hosted by Agadi and B C Brews outside, just outside of that area. On Saturday, one of the big events for Saturday besides the sled, sled race is a pie toss where I believe a few of the U B O T members have signed up and Mayor Billy have signed up to have pies thrown.
Wait, I thought I was signing up for free whipped cream. Yeah, it's just the delivery.
So for five.
Do we get to throw pies back at people?
That's what we do the rest of the year.
Ah, yeah, right. So for five bucks, you can throw a pie at a trustee member and I'd like to remind you, I, I really thank you for those of you who are planning on participating, that money all goes into our parks donation fund, which then local kids can apply to, if they're going to go to camp or if they want to go into youth hockey here, they can apply to, for a scholarship through the Parks Department. The idea is no kid left behind ever. So not on my watch.
Thanks. I'm, I'm lactose intolerance and no cream, no cream cheese pies.
Yeah. Oh, cheesecakes. I think that would be sacrilege, actually. So, so I, like I said, though, it is a local business. All, many of the businesses are very on board with this. Some are having bands, train cars having a band even until like one o'clock in the morning or something like that. It's a, there's going to be the ice sculpting. Different ice sculptures that are being carved by teams around town. The library is hosting like a corn silk building and you can learn that some of the history of Netherlands. There's a snowman building contest, snow pending. A hot cocoa trail through town. So if you buy a tiny little hot cocoa, it's like a, it's like an espresso cup. If you buy a little espresso cup for five bucks, you can go to various businesses around town and you even get a free six pack of donuts from the train cars. There's a wood splitting competition where all the split wood would be donated to our local food or our local wood bank down at the Presby Church. And then, like I said, a lot of, some of the proceeds for this event will go to our parks scholarship fund. So is there any, do we want to, is Peter on?
Yeah, Peter Kasek is online, who administrative support, support manager who is working with this, with Nikki Dunn here. Peter, do you have anything you want to add? I saw you come off mute, but we can't hear you.
Peter's.
How's that?
That's so much better.
Yeah, I think Nikki covered the majority of everything that we have planned, but I just really want to point out just how amazing it is for all the businesses that have signed up to have an event or something. We, I, I don't think I was expecting this many responses with as little time as we had, but it is great to see everyone just kind of excited to do something like this.
And Peter put together a really amazing website that you can find out all the activities on the online. Miranda's pulling that up now.
It's a nederdays.com.
It really is beautiful.
Thank you.
Yes, the, all, kudos goes to Peter for putting together this incredible website.
Absolutely. Are there any?
Thanks, Peter.
Questions or?
I think maybe I'll just highlight the website itself. So obviously things are happening on the daily and the team is really working hard to, you know, continue to promote this event. We have people reaching out wanting to add in. So this is a website we encourage you to visit frequently. There is the activities and the map and Peter is adding more almost daily. So stay up to speed there. Happy to give just a brief, we can do a brief update in the staff report next month, but this is really going to be your hub and I think we wanted to just share with you what's going on here and, and Mayor Protem Mahold had asked us to come forward and share about this event and answer any questions you might have, but I personally want to thank Nikki and Peter for all their hard work. You know, this is on top of just their regular job. They took this on and Stephanie Andelman is providing support as a consultant contractor who's assisting us as well. I think it's one of the first times town has really done its own sponsored event or at least in a very long time. And I think this is just step one, I believe. I think they do too. In a long journey of other Neder day events and other town sponsored events where we are showing that we are just as committed to hosting events as private organizers.
Just wait till the Fourth of July.
Thank you. Any more questions or? For Nikki or Peter?
Just super, I'm just super thrilled to see this. I mean, it's really exciting. It's exactly what I hoped would be the kind of thing we would get with Parks Department and it's paying off. And thanks to Stephanie Andelman, great job as well. And Peter, amazing work.
Thank you. So with that, we will move from our informational item into our discussion item for the night. We're going to talk about town regulations for the CBD, the Central Business District and Miranda, would you lead us with the aim?
Yes, I packed a lot into this aim. So, and we have a lot of visitors here with us tonight.
Was there no public comment on the last subject?
No, on informational items. We, we don't generally schedule.
Okay, thank you.
But there will be for, for these discussion items and action items.
And you can always email us.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a follow-up to your discussion on February twenty-first where the moratorium for the acceptance and processing of applications was discussed and there was a lot of conversation about next steps. And so I would like to turn this over to quite a few people throughout the presentation, but I will just give a brief overview. The first thing is that the Board of Trustees decided to move forward with an amendment of ordinance sixteen and seventeen where there would be a P U D component for any lot line consolidation in the CBD. Just a reminder, under that ordinance, it does not mean at the time you go seek a lot line consolidation that you have to have the P U D ready. It just means before you can develop the lot, you have to come forward with a P U D regardless of size. So this kind of is above and beyond current plan unit development regulations. The Planning Commission has graciously moved their meeting up to March fifteenth so that they can weigh in on this. But the official public hearing on this ordinance, which is required because it is a chapter sixteen amendment, will happen before the board on March twenty-first. There was a draft ordinance in your packet. That is the draft ordinance that will go before the Planning Commission unless there's further discussion tonight, which is one of the questions for you. The Board of Trustees had talked a lot about working with land use professionals when developing additional regulations or subarea plans specific to the Central Business District. There's a lot of talk about where do we go from here? How do we tap into our resources? And what kind of committee could be formed? I'll have Nicole, trustee Sterling, speak about the Town Improvement Group for Enhancing Revitalization Committee, also known as the Tiger Team. But we also have a few land use or kind of PR marketing personnel on with us. We of course have attorney Madsen. And attorney Madsen and, and attorney Widener do land use, right? They've been guiding us for as long as they've been our attorneys. They will always be at our disposal. And of course can answer any questions, but no matter what direction we go with this, we will want our legal team involved every step of the way. And attorney Madsen and Widener have agreed to, of course, be a part of that. Bohannon Houston, we have Derek Webb on and I'd love to turn it over to him at some point, who is with Bohannon Houston. They work with us in our housing needs assessment. I have been working with them for a few years now on Roadmap to Recovery. I really value their input and their insight and, and think they're incredible to work with. And when I reached out to Derek and was like, hey, this is what we're doing. He was happy to provide kind of a scope of work and share with you what a consultant firm like theirs could do for us. So that specific firm has two components. They have community planning where really they're looking at kind of our community, you know, what are, what do we have, our land use codes, our planning, our building codes, what changes we could make when it comes to developing the Central Business District. And then they have really the planning side of it, which is what does Netherlands want to be, you know, and guiding us through how do we codify and identify our character? Understanding the different stakeholders and bringing them together to help guide that process and really come out with kind of best practices or, or new code amendments that capture the vision worth striving for. In addition, I reached out to Bill Ray, who's in the room with us here. He is with W R Communications. And he really specializes in ensuring that the messaging we push out is accurate, it's concise, it's clear. When I spoke to Bill on the phone, he really specializes in some of these more complex situations where there's obviously a lot of opinions. They don't all line up together. So he really can support us with that strategic messaging, making sure that we're really getting on top of these issues, but that we're managing them and how we communicate in a really succinct way. So I'd love to give him time as well. Kat Correll is the Executive Director of Downtown Colorado Incorporated. She could not join us tonight. But what is incredible about Kat is she's been working with us for a very long time, about ten to fifteen years, we decided. And even in two thousand sixteen, this very, or seventeen, this very situation you're dealing with went before DCI at one of their conferences to talk about kind of singular ownership, the impact that has on town. And so she feels strongly that she could support us as well and be kind of that glue that pulls everyone together. So say you have your land use consultants, you've got your PR marketing people, legal staff, the B O T, the community. They can really serve as that hub. So no one's working in a silo. We're all teamed up together. And again, DCI understands Netherlands and the complexities of Netherlands. And the conversation I had with her was almost like she'd been listening to all these sessions because it's not the first time we've had these conversations. So she would be happy to support us in kind of that advisory capacity. Trustee Severs asked me to add some information about Joe Minicozy. I will note I did not reach out to him. Was looking for a little bit more feedback from the board on whether that's an avenue you wanted to pursue. I did see that he does a little bit more of the financial aspects of urban development and I wasn't sure if we're at that stage, but happy to reach out. I really just contacted people within our current network that, that we had the relationships with. And even Bill has been working with Andrew Bliss, our utility supervisor previously. supervisor previously, and that's how he was recommended to us. A reminder, you know, while all of these individuals are incredible and their organizations are amazing, anything we do requires the RFP process. So I thank them so much for being here. And of course, would hope that if we went that way, they would bid on the RFP. Do you want to do the Tiger Team really quick? And you want me to pull up your, or do you want to wait? Okay, we'll get to the Tiger Team in a minute. While working on kind of reaching out to people, I also met with our DOLA representative, Chris Lemay. And I was like, here's what we're up against. And he said, why aren't you just going for a full comprehensive plan? You know, your subarea plan is incredible, but you might as well, you're reaching your 10 years, you know, split it up where you go subarea plan and really work on that, but make your final product your true comprehensive plan. I provided some information here. We are eligible for their energy and mineral grant for a comprehensive plan. It's a 50/50 match, and most comprehensive plans cost approximately $200,000. So we would be responsible for $100,000 of that. There is a current cycle open for funding that closes in about a month, April 3rd, or there's another round of funding that opens up in June. And so that's just something else to consider. Let me just go over the questions before the board, and then we could kind of kick to all the players, I think. So I have a lot of questions for you tonight. They are, do you have any initial comments about ordinance 838? Do you direct town staff to draft some RFPs for planning consultants? If so, what kind of budget do you want to apply to that? And Derek did provide a sample budget of what you could consider. Do you want to contract with a public relations communications firm? And Bill provided some financial information of what that might cost, at least for him. Does the board have any feedback about the options for the Tiger Team, which we can go over in a little bit? Does the BOT want to work on a comprehensive plan right now? And if so, does the BOT want to pursue DOLA energy and mineral funds? And lastly, just do you have questions about what we believe we are doing here? So Billy, I don't know if maybe you want to start with like Derek and Bill and then go to...
Um, yeah. Why don't we start with Bill since he's here?
Great. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm Bill Ray, and I'm the owner of WR Communications. Thank you for having me come tonight. Introduce myself, answer any questions you might have about the experience I've had in communities, helping with community engagement, receiving feedback from the community, whether that's residents, local businesses, and how we can utilize that to then communicate the process you're about ready, you're thinking about embarking on, so that you can keep your community informed and also keep them engaged and active. So for about 20 years, I've been working as a local government consultant. I work with towns, cities, counties, school districts, fire districts, all kinds of levels of government to help them engage with their residents and their local businesses and their stakeholders, especially when they're looking at issues that can be controversial, or issues that have hard opinions on different sides. Maybe that's asking voters to approve tax increases or bonds to invest in the community, or making changes to the community as far as I've worked on Main Street improvement projects, development issues that have had controversies on different sides, where people disagree with the vision or the focus for the land use or different things like that. So we try and bring in different stakeholders, different community opinions. How do we distill those and use those to help us improve our communications with the community? Where are pockets of concern? And how do we provide messaging to address those concerns? How do we be proactive so that we're, folks aren't waiting to learn about issues, and then misinformation builds or opinions build in one direction or the other? How are we proactive with our communications? So that is what I specialize in. A lot of times that has me working closely with town staff, has me working with other consultants, whether those are architects, planning consultants, different, you know, land use planners, and then also working with citizen groups. And how do we take, you know, citizen volunteers or advisory groups and build a process where they can review and kind of speak and bring the opinions in for the whole community into that process? So that's some of the work I do. I've done that successfully down in Arvada with a controversial urban renewal project that was in Arvada a few years ago. That was a dispute between residents and the city government over revitalizing some vacant land up in the town of Basalt on the western slope that included helping them from the process of where they actually, much very complex and very hard citizen taxpayer opinions, where the town went from discovering a taper violation for 10 years that was going to require not only an election, but a refund of tax dollars, high mistrust in the local government, and taking that process all the way through to resolving the taper crisis. And just two years later, successfully passing a bond measure to revitalize the Main Street of the town and make other investments in the town's future. So taking a very controversial situation and turning it into a positive. And like I've said, I've worked across the state of Colorado on projects like this. So happy to take any questions or be part of the conversation tonight. And thanks again for having me up.
I figured that maybe Bill could just hang out up here and then, or you're welcome to second seat. But then Derek, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Thanks, Miranda. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, again, thank you for your time tonight. Thanks for having me. My name is Derek Webb. I'm a senior planner and project manager with Bohannon Houston. Little bit of background on Bohannon Houston, we are a full-service planning and civil engineering firm, which is also one of the things that we like to highlight as a really strong kind of piece of the pie, I guess you could say, because oftentimes we work internally and we've got this, you know, larger team that we're able to set up and leverage to, you know, move from, you know, really complex planning topics, or controversial planning topics, or large-scale planning topics, and move them into kind of the engineering space and kind of ground them in reality and help further the implementation of the planning work that we do. Specifically, I've been a planner for over 12 years. Most of my experience has been at the regional or local government side of things, whether it be working with, you know, entities like Dr. Cog or the Denver Regional Council of Governments, or working specifically kind of like as an extension of planning staff for smaller communities throughout a wide variety of municipalities and parts of the state. I do also have some experience working down in Albuquerque. That's where I grew up. But I've been a Colorado transplant for quite a while now and really have grown to love working with smaller communities throughout the region. Little bit more on Bohannon Houston. One of the key pieces and kind of, you know, what you see in the scope of work or the scoping letter that we kind of provided, it's, you know, it's a best guess or an estimate at this point on what could work. Obviously, we'd be fully supportive of brainstorming and really getting into the details and supporting, really drilling down on what the work actually needed to include. But, you know, just in some brief conversations with Miranda over the last two weeks, that was kind of our best guess at this point. But I think one of the key things I'd like to point out about Bohannon Houston specifically is that we kind of have two planning groups. There's the larger planning group that I'm a part of that works more specifically with local governments, helping with, you know, land use types of things, transportation master planning, corridor planning, strategic planning, comprehensive planning, all that type of stuff. And then we also have our community development group, which tends to focus more on the private development side of things. But they, we kind of tag-team quite often to discuss things like PUDs, you know, the approval process, construction permitting, plan processing, all that kind of stuff. So in that scoping letter we provided, it kind of breaks down those two types of aspects. And it's something that I feel like we could leverage to support further conversations if you all were interested or, you know, needed a little bit more information on how we could support in the future, or what you guys might, what type of support you might need generally. But yeah, I think that's the gist. Have any answer questions or chime in as necessary. But thanks again for having us. And I hope that the information we provided is helpful in any direction you all choose to go.
Miranda, Bohannon is the firm this work with, oops, on our housing study, right?
Correct. They are in a housing study, and the town is involved in the DOLA Roadmap to Recovery, where we're working on broadband efforts. And Bohannon Houston is also the consultant that was selected to support the Clear Creek team. So I think I've been working with Derek, I believe, for two plus, or it maybe feels like two, but I think about two years.
Okay, good.
Any questions for Derek or Bill?
Bill? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, there's a lot of questions to resolve on all crammed into one tonight.
Yeah, a lot of questions before the board. And I think that's really, it was important, I will say, as staff. And I think that Commissioner Reese obviously said this too. You know, the staff and the board, I think we're all incredible, but this is not our expertise, this is not our wheelhouse, and this is big scale what's before us. And so I think it's vital that we bring together subject matter experts, land use professionals, people who specialize in public relations and communication as we navigate this. I do think it's worth the financial investment to pull together one or a team of these individuals to work on this and to guide us. Because I think at times when we've tried to lead large-scale projects, it becomes challenging. And these are individuals who specialize in those diverse opinions and helping to really like drill into what is it that's going to work well for everyone? We're never going to reach consensus, but that's what they specialize in, is getting us at least to that place. And so I think it's, I do encourage the board to, you know, at least give us some direction of starting the RFP process, which we would, of course, bring back to you, but letting us know what types of consultants you might be interested in teaming up with as you move forward.
I have a quick question for Derek. Derek, my name's John, and we've been working with a few potential...
Can you get the mic just right in your mouth?
Is this working? Is this better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. We've been working with a few potential business owners who have interest in new construction in the area. And I was wondering if you have studies on financial feasibility of projects after they've been launched in relation to, you know, things like square footage or number of stories and those sorts of things that might be helpful. In addition to, you know, parking capacity and the sorts of things that we, you know, we've been looking at. But from my perspective, I've been looking at it with an uneducated eye. So some guidance in that area would be super helpful if you got it.
I think generally, my, you know, right off, right off the bat, yes, you know, and I could hunt those down for you. I think obviously, a lot of our approach would be, you know, thinking about the context sensitivity of those types of projects and specific relationships with the code currently and any type of adjustment that would need to take place. You know, I think it's interesting that the coupling between jobs and workforce and housing and all that type of stuff, it's definitely at the top of mind at a lot of communities right now. And we're talking to a lot of communities about, you know, things like we're currently working on with the town in Netherland in regards to the housing needs assessment. So yes, I could definitely push some best practices, some other examples of communities that are kind of weighing that financial feasibility and trying to support, you know, business owners and that type of thing in their communities. But again, I'd have to kind of expand my conversation with those in my group and see if, see what we could provide. But yeah.
Perfect. Thanks.
Yeah.
And then actually... And then a real quick question for you, Bill. So one of the things that I think we've all seen specifically most recently is misinformation wars that are happening with regard to, with regard to that sort of thing. What's your best method or recommendation to kind of help reduce that at least?
Yeah, so that is a great question. And anytime you have these kind of situations, kind of misinformation becomes the currency of the issue, right? So one thing that I always believe in is that you have to correct the record as quickly as possible. You cannot let misinformation be flowed around unaddressed, and you cannot let it become republished, because the more it's republished, it's rebroadcast, it starts taking on a life of its own as fact. So we have to be, maybe aggressive is not the right word, but we have to be persistent in monitoring the information, correcting the record. I believe that you don't correct the record by restating the charge. So we have to find good ways to correct misinformation without kind of giving credibility to the misinformation. We have to look at really good channels, how we do that, whether that's social media. I mean, unfortunately, and I'm a parent of three teenagers right now, I can't stand social media. But we got to deal with it. So we have to manage it. We have to manage that information, misinformation cycle that happens on there. But we have to look at different ways we can also get out information and how town members receive information. Is it just social media? Are there other sources? Do we have local media, local, other ways in the community that folks like to get information? And how do we use that to spread the correct information? Another way to address misinformation, I find, is being very proactive, having great, strong communications, communications that are using plain English to describe the complex things that we're about to embark on or we're already embarking on. Because people, a lot of times, don't understand a lot of this government ease and land use conversation. And we have to find ways to provide that information in plain English, understandable, proactive ways. And I think that can also help avoid kind of the misinformation cycle.
Great answers, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I had a couple of questions about the SOW from Bohannon Houston that we have here. So starting from task one, you know, on to task three in the CBD regulations, CBD Regulation Review Facilitation Support. This seems to start from a place where we already have our planning documents in place. Is that correct? And then you would help us with the zoning code, all the language that we need to implement those planning documents. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, to an extent. I think part of it is, you know, kind of bundled within task one and task two is this understanding of what it, where you're at currently, like you mentioned, and then having few, you know, more conversations with you all, planning and zoning commission, whatnot, to figure out, okay, what are the pain points? What is the need? What is the, you know, what is the vision? Kind of like Miranda mentioned at the onset of the conversation, to help set up the conversation on what, kind of, how the code needs to be massaged in order to make that a reality.
Got it. Yeah, because we're in this situation where we are at the end of our 10-year comp planning period, and we don't have a new comp plan. And so I think that we're going to have to carefully kind of decide when in the process we might bring in folks like you at Bohannon Houston, who might be able to help us once we have a few more of those pieces in place, unless I'm misunderstanding the role that you are articulating here.
Well, I think too, on, on the, on the other side of things, some of this work and some of these conversations could also set you up for that, to make sure that the, the coordination between the comp plan, that vision, and the, the document, the zoning code kind of align as you work through kind of managing the updates to both.
Got it.
And Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry, really quick, is, so I only talked to Derek about kind of this land use side of this, but, but firms like Bohannon Houston do comprehensive plans as well. And, and, you know, I think that's if the board wanted to wrap this into just a, a large comprehensive plan, I think there is value in an organization like Bohannon Houston who can take it all on, but then of course know that one of our most emergent components is that subarea plan. And we start with CBD regulations as we work on all the other components. And that's a long, that's a long plan, that comp plan. It's going to take a while. It's not a 90-day plan.
Right.
Exactly.
And then my, my next question, still for you, Derek, was-
Sure.
In the, in the PUD development review and support section, and I guess, am I understanding it correctly, that this would essentially be the town paying for services that a developer would use to craft a PUD proposal?
Yes and no. I, I see it as kind of the liaison between the town and the developer to make sure that the town's best interests are in line with what, what ultimately gets approved in that PUD process.
So you'd be working with town staff primarily-
Right.
And interfacing with, between town staff and the developer before a PUD came before a board like ours?
Right, right. It's like, like adding staff capacity with some of the, the more ingrained, you know, land use and policy type knowledge and expertise.
Right. With the, I mean, general intention, it seems here of getting a PUD that's actually could be approved. So it seems that that would be, you know, extremely helpful on the developer side as well as on the town side.
Yep. Yeah, and, and I think there's also, you know, some ingrained benefit in, in having a consultant, you know, not to like toot my own horn or anything, but, but just to, to create a little bit of that buffer, to, to take the brunt of, of, you know, some of the, you know, conflict that can arise in those conversations and that type of thing, to get to a smoother process, to get to more agreement, that type of thing.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Any more questions for these two?
Trusty Sterling, do you want to do the tiger team?
If not, Bill, you can take a seat and maybe we'll have more later.
Well, I guess, I guess before we get to that point, is it okay to ask, like, what you, what everyone's thinking in terms of what some of those resources that you seem most bought into, that you'd be leaning towards, or if there's certain resources that you wouldn't want us to consider? I'd be interested in knowing that. And then we can talk about tiger team.
I'm really interested in public, the public communications portion of it. I don't think we've done a real good job. I think we've done a rotten job in some cases. We've done the best that we can. I'd rather work with somebody who has felt the blowtorch in other communities and is, is, it looks from talks I've, I had earlier in the week, it sounds like this team has that capability to not only communicate properly, but move us towards consensus because we're, we're not getting there on our own.
Thank you. Who else?
So I'm generally thinking that I would, I haven't prioritized it yet in my mind of like which services I think are like the ones that we absolutely need and shouldn't let go of, and which ones are lower on that list, obviously depending on what our budget ends up being for this project. So that's all going to be under consideration. I think that the way I would prioritize it though, once I start doing it, is based on what will be most helpful to the community first and foremost, because I think that will result in being very helpful for us when everyone is on the same page when it comes to the facts and figures. So that's the way that I'm sort of thinking about it, is like, how can we help the people who want to develop their land and the community members who are going to use it, get on the same page? And if that can happen, our job is easy, right? Our job is easy. So I'm less thinking of like contracting services for us to use, and more thinking of contracting services for the community to use with town staff to get on the same page. That's where I'm hoping this gets to. So that's how I would start to prioritize all of these. That makes sense.
To a degree. So it's, you'd almost lean towards some of the communications and that kind of thing?
Well, I think all of them are really interesting, you know, but like I said, I haven't been able to kind of rank prioritize them yet, but especially, you know, what Derek was talking, not talking about, but wrote in the SOW, right, about like having community meetings and that kind of thing, and, you know, bringing people on the same page. And then if we also, you know, connected that with public relations, maybe we'd have something really powerful there. But yeah, less thinking of like, well, what do I need to understand the situation? And more thinking of like, well, what does the community need to get on the same page? Yep.
I just have a quick question. Downtown Colorado, what specifically, I mean, and you had said before, but what specific roles, you know, have they played for us in the past?
So they have been working with our DDA off and on for all of those years. And so I know Katrina Harms is on here, and she was even a part of that challenge community back in 2017, when again, this like very same situation was brought forward. I would say what they are is, is really that, that advisory component. And that's really, that's what Kat felt like she could offer was the, what did she refer to it as? She referred to it as advisory services model, where they do the training and events, the networking, public engagement, the technical assistance. They help to pull together all those subject matter experts. And so they felt like, just, you know, if we didn't feel like we had an avenue where we could pull together all these consultants, that they would really serve as that network to do that. And, and I know DCI has applied for different opportunities under kind of that same umbrella where they team up with, and I know they've teamed up with Bohannon Houston before, like they team up with other organizations that kind of come together as like one bulk service almost, under the DCI umbrella. You know, I do know that other organizations have done it similar, where, you know, someone, a land use consultant could choose to bring in DCI. I mean, really, at the end of the day, I think Kat felt like town should become a member again. We used to be a member. Now only the DDA is a member. There's value in both of us joining together for a thousand dollars a year to be members together and tap into their resources available. And she encouraged us to come to their conference in April and see what they have to offer. Offered Netherland to potentially be another challenge community, where again, you'd hear from stakeholders about what the best path forward is. And we would team up ideally with the DDA to go into a group rate. But yeah, I mean, I, I just talked to Kat yesterday, so she didn't have as much time, I think, as others to really like chew on this situation. I was like, I'm dropping this on you, what do you have? But I don't know if Katrina, if you're open, if Katrina wanted to comment, I know she had some great things to say about DCI and the supports they could provide, because I did call her afterwards. And I know she's got the closest relationship to kind of historical DCI pieces, kind of putting her on the spot, but Katrina, are you there?
I, I am here. Hello.
Hi.
And I am happy to talk. I don't know if people on the board know that I was the chair of the DDA for five years. So, and unexpectedly ended up as the chair and leaned heavily on DCI as a resource to help me and the board I had at that time learn about what a DDA was and what we could do and what we should be doing. And the challenge, oh, what was it called again, that I worked on was one of the last meetings, the challenge studio that I attended as a DDA, as a, as a member of the DDA, because after that I was no longer eligible. So, but Kat had been coming up to Netherland for years and knows this town and has a soft spot in it. And the people that she was able to pull together from other towns and her knowledge was amazing. And at a kind of weird point in the DDA, DCI really, really helped with getting the DDA, keeping the DDA going and the education part of it. But what Netherland always struggles with is the funding. The challenge studio needed support. The DDA doesn't have an operation budget. The town doesn't have a lot of money. So moving some of those things forward from the challenge studio got really, really, really tough, and it was really sad to see it go. So that's kind of where I was and where that all ended up.
And to jump in a little bit more to, obviously, DCI, definitely their focus is downtown development authorities, kind of chamber of commerce is. The DDA, current DDA is a member. Kate and I, Kate Mazengale and I met with Kate a few months ago. And I think Kate was just hoping, you know, could she serve as kind of this bridge to help town and the DDA also kind of move this vision forward together? Because she does specialize in both areas, you know, the DDAs as well as government and their downtown development. And so I just think, you know, even if, if it wasn't bringing her on in the advisory capacity, town joining DCI again just gives us access to everything Kat can do for us and then some, and then serves as that network. You know, we of course already have our network with the DDA, but this is like yet another avenue to bring us all together and take her expertise here into consideration as we go forward with downtown development.
I remember now, I, I talked to Tom, kind of helped me get to know, or be introduced to the Longmont DDA executive directors. I talked with her for a while, Kimberly McKee, and she had, she had recommended downtown Colorado, now that I'm remembering and looking at my notes. So she said it's been really helpful for their DDA, and also she knew that they've been coming up here and helping that for years.
Yeah, I find myself thinking if, if someone like that wasn't doing this work, who would be doing it?
Well, that's it also, and sorry to just jump in one more time, if I hadn't had her when I was the chair of the DDA without the, without a staff at the DDA, I, you know, it's, it's a struggle. So these are the kind of holes that we need to fill to make sure some of these projects move forward, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that one of us would be the person doing it. I, I tend to think it would end up being Miranda being the person doing it, and then we have to weigh the pros and cons there, like the $5,000 to $10,000. Is it worth giving our town administrator that workload, you know, taking her time away from other things to pay a five, five to 10 grand to get someone else to do this? So that, that's how I'm thinking about that part at least, and it seems beneficial at, on first glance, that we do it.
And I think Kate, you know, she was like, well, I feel like step one is to become a member, and that's a fair assessment. I think we become the member and we tap into and, and explore this even more. And, and she's of course willing to support us in any way, but would love to see the town re-enter the agreement, and we would just split the costs with the DDA.
And I was going to ask, just one more thing about DCI. I wish they were here, but maybe you could ask for us, in terms of the sort of market research component of this and the financial component of this, do they have advisory services to that end to maybe, because we have that on the list here, we have Manicosi there on the list as someone who could do that. But if we have, if we have something that we're already using that could do the same thing, maybe we could roll that into one. And then my other question related to Joe Manicosi's presentation was, can we get those materials or not?
I can reach out. Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, I knew that, you know, the, the conversation had been out there about Joe. I couldn't find anything in our server. And, and when, I, I don't believe that we have them, but I can ask. I can always reach out, and I'm happy to, to better understand, because the speculation I have about the services he provides is purely based on his website.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm happy to jump on the phone and find out what more he can do to support us.
It would, I mean, it would be nice to know what someone said about our CBD, right, only a few years ago, and then decide whether or not we need that same person to come in and update us, or if we feel like that's sufficient and we can use that moving forward, working with these other folks.
And I do believe some citizens have recorded videos that we could potentially capture and get, so. And just to clarify, the market piece was, I think this is something I had asked you, that is potentially already being covered by Bohannon Houston, correct?
Right, or I would, and maybe if Bill wants to answer this, my feeling is kind of that combination of, of consultants, land use professionals, and then also kind of that PR communication firm can support. But, but for marketing and pushing out materials, I think Derek, is that-
Not marketing.
Not marketing, market. So like understanding the type of businesses that for this time and space and context of the world that we are in today, what are the type of businesses that we should be looking at bringing in that are going to give us the best return on our investment, being a small mountain town in Colorado?
I don't want to speak for Derek, but it is my understanding that, that is some information that you can tap into and maybe have personnel on your staff.
Yes, yes, we can. We also have great teaming partners that are really well-versed in that type of stuff too. So yeah, again, we, we could always kind of massage the scope of work and, and our proposed budget to, to reflect that better as you guys move forward.
Any more questions for these consultants or Miranda on the others who weren't here? Or can we move to?
Well, were there any other thoughts from the rest of the BOD members regarding these type of consultants and what you would be most interested in seeing?
I'm, I'm favorable of retaining some consulting services, and I think it's sound move on our part. And I'm, I'm encouraging, or I'm supportive of moving, moving this all forward, so. Assuming everybody else feels the same way, I think we just try to keep, keep advancing this focus forward. Now, I don't know what the next step would be. Maybe it comes back as an action item of some sort.
I think it would be good, you know, if you're looking to do an RFP, I think for me, it's like, what scope are we doing? Is it the CBD regulation development subarea plan, or are we going full comprehensive plan and asking, releasing an RFP for that?
Full comprehensive plan.
And I guess I would say we would want to wait to do an RFP until we got the energy and mineral funds.
Yep. It's just going to set like it, it's a domino effect.
Right, but we can apply, like if we got the, the kind of green light today to start pulling together our energy and mineral application, we could bring it back to you on the 21st to show you kind of, I mean, that's, I hate to say it's kind of guaranteed money, but it really is. It's like, if you can come with 50%, that money's yours. It's how we funded quite a bit of things in town.
And just to clarify for everyone, so the 50% would actually come from a supplemental budget?
It would. Yes.
And if we didn't go with the comp plan, we'd be having to pay for this whole other effort with no-
You're doing a supplemental budget regardless of what direction you're going.
We'd have to pay 100% of-
These funds don't exist in any other capacity, I guess. The one thing under, going for a whole comprehensive plan, which I as staff recommend, is, you know, go for everything. We have so many other smaller plans that these consultants can really tie into the housing and the transportation and the reimagined destinations, everything we have to build, and that, they don't have to do a lot of that work over again, but they can really dig into what are the areas we haven't touched yet.
And I think what's almost so amazing about this time and place is that all of these things are coming together potentially within like a year's time, so that we have a chartered course to then actually break ground on, or at least to start that. And I think that that's just kind of, that's an amazing place to be in.
And it's worth noting, we have to have a comprehensive plan, right? So-
And we can't keep pointing it off, because that, that's potentially what would happen if we weren't kind of faced with this situation, right? We'd be, potentially keep putting it off.
Yeah, so can we direct you to get on with it?
Yep. I can get on with it, yeah. So next step would be to visit with our DOLA representative to let him know we're interested in the energy and mineral prepare application for that. And that would be submitted by March, or excuse me, April 3rd.
I say yes. I nod.
We're nodding?
Nod, noda four?
I, I do want to just make it known for folks out there, we, we're still going to cover, cover the tiger team, and then we're going to have public comments, so don't feel like we're just ending this. So don't feel like we're just ending this without public comment.
Yeah, thank you. And was there anything else, so going, so applying for a DOLA and then from there, starting on the RFP process?
Right, yeah. So I mean, we're still probably looking at not being able to do the RFP until maybe May, just because of the contract, but DOLA moves very quickly once awarded. So, you know, I think that's, you know, I, I, I really reflect on what Trustee Severs is saying, you know, if there's some work that can be done and so it doesn't feel stale between now and then, but I do think that's the right move to, to go for the energy and mineral grant for the comprehensive plan.
So if we're all wrapped up there, we can talk a little bit about this Tiger Team, right? Our, yes, Town Improvement Group for Enhancing Revitalization, Tiger. That's my greatest accomplishment right there. Making the name work. So these are just ideas and as we kind of start to think about how we might form, and of course this will be influenced by what some of our consultants, you know, consult us on in terms of who should be a part of this core team. But for the sake of putting it out there and getting public comment on it, is also something I'm very interested in. And so hence, we've got a, you know, a couple of ideas that are just floating out there and then I'm hoping that others will participate and also throw out ideas. So there's a couple of options before us and so go ahead and click to the next. This is potentially one option, you know, there is this, has been some feedback of potentially an, an idea to have all the town boards a part of this core team. And we're going to differentiate between what's a core team and then what are the stakeholders that are consulted and a part of this process, but maybe just not a part of the core team. And so for instance, we would have, you know, a representative from the, from NDDA, from maybe a couple from Planning Commission, ProSAB, SAB, right? All of those folks would potentially be a part of this core team. And in addition to members from the BOT, town staff and town staff right now is identified as Miranda until further notice. Community members and then also our consultants, our planning and, and market specialists or PR consultants. Now, if you click to the next slide, what this means is that we would, hold on, let me catch up to her. This is just a little bit more of an example again of what that could potentially, those town boards could be pulled from, the numbers of people from each of the boards. Going on to the next slide, potentially, again, these are all just ideas, maybe five community members as a part of this, in addition to our planning and market specialists. If you pop over to the next slide, what this is really kind of showing is that, again, with that core team, there are still folks that are consulted such as the CBD property owners and CBD business owners, because those aren't always the same stakeholder. And I think it's really important for us to differentiate between folks that might be property owners and folks that are running businesses there, but don't necessarily own property. So this is what one option could look like. Go to the next slide. And actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip that one to, others can read it later. So the other idea is, well, we could have as the town board representation besides the BOT would mostly be the PC. In addition, just like what was an option one, community members, planning and market specialists and Miranda, our town staff representative. Now, potentially, you know, going to a model like this, and if you, you know, go to the next slide, Miranda, again, just a general potential makeup, three BOT members, two PC members, and then the community members, town staff and planning and market specialists. But in the next slide, what we really see is that then it becomes this much more condensed core team. But now we've sort of got a whole bunch of other teams, the, the previous town boards that, you know, were part of option one's core team, they become those who we consult with, who are still influential in the process, they're just not a part again of that core team. Still the CBD business owners are there, the CBD property owners, and now just the other town boards become a part of that outer circle, the orbit, if you will. So again, these are just sort of ideas, but what I'm wanting to do in putting them before you is get a, you know, a test, kind of a, you know, just a thermometer here of what you're thinking about. Again, I have to preface this with, as we potentially bring on some of these consultants, this could very well change, but I still would love to get a little bit of a little test from y'all.
Yeah. I immediately gravitate towards number one. For maximum representation, I like the idea of folks being able to bring back the results of the meeting to other boards and then you immediately have them tied in. Everybody knows what's going on. It doesn't feel like it's just another Planning Commission meeting, which is, I think, what it would end up feeling like if we went with option number two. Not that there's anything wrong with the Planning Commission or their meetings, but it would be a low representation across the community, I think. We, we can say, yes, of course, everybody would be invited to maybe observe or whatever, but you know, look at the room right now, right? And we have our stalwart and Kayla and, yeah. So, so on that front, I say number one, and I just wanted to say something that I think, I do believe is true, which is, you know, many studies have shown this, that from the seventh member of a group on, you have reduced effectiveness in decision-making, right? Like six is the sweet spot. It would be great if this was a team of people who didn't have to vote on stuff, who weren't worried about even numbers, who were having conversations, having discussions, compiling information, bringing it all together. We can send it to the Planning Commission when they have to make a decision, right? On the result of this planning process. I don't think that they need to be doing the entire planning process themselves. At least that's the way I'm, that's the way I'm feeling about it right now.
I like that as well with, with a very maybe strong suggestion to really take into consideration the, the marketing and community information dissemination be coupled with also careful polling to make sure that we, we understand what the, you know, if there is a divide in the community, we understand what that is, we understand the percentages. So that we are getting feedback of information that could be valuable in terms of helping us to guide our decision as well. So, but yeah, I like option one quite a bit because it does call a bit of the noise and then it doesn't become a huge broad conversation that doesn't go anywhere time after time. So I like that.
Who's next?
I would just say there's one thing, you know, I talked to you about this Nicole, but that if the BOT members were part of this team, that they would not be voting members in it, in my mind, or you know, my, my recommendation or thoughts is they wouldn't be because they would, because the BOT would be voting on it at a later time. So that might steer the ship a little prematurely.
And my dream would be that this team doesn't actually have to do formal votes at all.
Discussion and recommendation.
Yeah. And it's really about coming to, not consensus, right? But coming to some form of.
Common ground.
Common ground, exactly. So that, I mean, that's the whole point of putting this team together. If we just put another, another team together that's divided four to three, we haven't really accomplished anything. We've just pushed, pushed the problem onto another group, right? So that's what I'm hoping to see from it.
Yeah, I mean, my comments I've shared with you, I'm, you know, inclined to keep the group a little smaller if possible. And just now thinking, you know, perhaps three BOT members is, is a little heavy on, on BOT representation. And, you know, maybe we could scale that back to two or possibly even one.
One.
Yeah. I kind of like the idea of just one BOT member. Perhaps we could alternate occasionally, I don't know. But, uh, yeah, some thoughts there. That's kind of my only impressions. I like option one.
At this point, it's just feedback, just taking all the data points. So if you've got anything wild and crazy out there, throw it down. Tom?
We've talked about it over the weekend and I think you know where I stand, but I really like option one and I'm stretched real thin with outside committees between Dr. Cog and Food Pantry and, and the consortium and everything else. So I'm gonna opt to let somebody else go first, but I really wanted to say a deep thank you to you two for solving, getting us out of a conundrum.
Yes.
In a really creative way and getting us to move on. So I think that was Tiger Point Two Five.
I'm also want to share some of that credit with Miranda. We couldn't have done it without her and her extensive knowledge and what was possible. So I think multiple, multiple pokes and prods from, from all of us.
Um, yeah, thank you so much. Definitely getting this ball rolling has been great. I have one question, maybe I'm, I'm reading it wrong. I agree with, a small number seems to be nimble and smart, and not smart, but like easier to come to, you know, grounded kind of common ground. That's a weird way, common ground, but it doesn't, option one actually have more people? Am I reading it wrong?
So when you're talking about the core team, yeah, I mean, there's potentially, you get the community members plus one person from each of the boards, right? That, so are, it's just distributed differently. So you're actually probably still going to be interacting with very similar numbers, but in terms of what the core team and who the recommendations are coming from and whatnot, there is a difference in those numbers.
So I don't, I don't think that we have to count, or sorry, maybe I'm, I don't think we have to count the planning and marketing specialists as part of the core team. There are advisors.
Even if you don't, even if you don't, it's still, there's a, there's still a delta between the two.
So those are folks who are guiding the core team.
Well, yeah, no, I agree, just how I read it. Option one has six people from the boards and still five community members. And I'm not against, I'm just trying to understand the.
I mean, we could have one.
And option two has two people from one board and five community members. And I like the idea of multiple board representation. It's just gonna be more people, which I'm not against, I'm just pointing that out.
So what is it? It's SAB, it's Planning Commission?
ProSAB.
ProSAB.
And.
BZA.
BZA.
Yep, SAB, ProSAB, DDA.
So I count six total there.
And two from, two from the Planning Commission.
Why two?
We can make it one.
Just make it one from every board.
Yeah. And again, all of it is, we, you know, kind of get to, and, and that's why I'm very interested in public comments and also kind of hearing from our community on thoughts about that because we can quite literally make it how we want, so.
With that, are there any more clarifying questions or would you like to go to, can we go to public comment? Okay, we'll open up for public comment, three minutes and we'll start in room. Kayla, do you have any? Okay. Thank you. Folks online, just raise your hand or start speaking and.
And I may call on Barb and Barb, I'm so sorry. Obviously Barb is the current Chair of the DDA and, and my guess is she wants to, will want to speak to that and maybe more, but maybe Barb, if you wanted to get started.
Well, then does she get, does she not get a timer?
I don't know. And I, it's up to you. I would say Barb is here, I'm sure is a citizen as well as her role as a DDA.
I would like to hear from her.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't do the timer then.
No timer.
But I'm gonna leave it on the screen. Oh, wait, hold on Barb, we can't hear you yet. Hold on, I have to change some things. Okay, go ahead.
I just had two comments because you're kind of discussing two different things. One, you discussed DCI and Katrina was great because she does have all that history. It is also in our master plan. Tomorrow night at our meeting, we're going to discuss going back through our master plan. So we would love to have that same goal in mind. And then as far as the Tiger Team goes, we do have a couple of board members that are already interested in being a part of that. And I think the DDA should take part, but definitely just one person would be plenty for us. That's, that's really kind of all I had to say. I'd be happy to send the master plan if anybody doesn't have it and hopefully be part of the conversation going forward.
It's one of the documents that would be a part of this Tiger Team's required reading, so.
Yes.
Very, thank you.
Thanks Barb. Anyone else out there want to public, have a public comment on this subject? There's a raised hand.
Kathleen is raising her hand, she'll have to call in. Tanya has her hand raised. If she wants to go while we're waiting for Kathleen to call in. Tanya, do you want to?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I don't want to step on Kathleen's toes. Just real quick, can we see the difference of the two graphics? Again, I'd like to see the stakeholders that are kind of lumped in the board group where they fall when they're out there in the perimeter. And then, oh, I'm getting feedback, sorry. How will the community members be chosen?
That's a good question that we are gonna work on answering here today.
Yes, and if you've got any feedback or ideas, there's been different ways, you know, through Envision 2030, looking at some of those documents that it's been done in the past. But yeah, if anybody has feedback or suggestions on that, that'd be great.
And Tanya, that, that graphic, that the PowerPoint that Trustee Serling put together is in the board packet and I'm happy to send that complete packet or just this image to you if you'd like.
Thank you, Miranda, that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll send it over right now. Kathleen?
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Kathleen Chippai, 32-year resident, 20-year business owner. I just wanted to interject that I believe it was Kat that brought Joe Manicosi and put $10,000, that, that grant initially to bring Joe here was $20,000, the money that was contributed to pay him. And $10,000 came from Kat and whatever the group she's with, I'm not in front of the computer right now, to space the name out. But, and I do want Joe Manicosi consulted before we move forward on anything. And I find it disheartening that the town didn't keep a single document from his presentation that $20,000 paid for. It's just shocking to me. That's why I recorded it, that's why people can watch it, anyone can from the public on YouTube. And I would, I'm going to have to, I guess, send in an email and share it in a packet so people realize it's there. It's been there seven years and less than 120 people have viewed it. So that's really disheartening. I also hope to be part of the group, of the Tiger Group, since I am a tenant in a building I don't own and am possibly realistically looking at the loss of two to five years of business, honestly. So I definitely would like to be included and I guess that's all I have to say now. I, I don't like the tone of some of the things. I guess, I guess what I don't like is, I don't know who was speaking, but I'm hearing things about misinformation going, you know, wild on social media. A lot of the disinformation that I've seen on social media comes straight from people who are on the BOT or have been on the BOT, including the ex-mayor and his wife. And I think stopping people like that from spreading misinformation. Um, and I think, uh, stopping people like that from spreading misinformation is, is probably a good idea. But it's kind of hard to work with the code. I guess I'm a little disappointed in one thing. Here we're going to go into the code that is completely conflicting throughout and doesn't make sense throughout. And instead of reviewing this as a community and addressing the entire code, we're going to go just apparently for the CBD zone, which I don't like and appreciate because we've got a serious problem with the foundational documents of this town. And the fact that the ordinance languages that are signed and stamped at Town Hall do not match what the MUNI code currently says. And we have no, I've confirmed this last week, we have no confirmation of any changes that happened to the code whatsoever between, uh, nineteen eighty-one, uh, ordinance two oh nine and, uh, twenty fourteen, when we adopted, uh, ordinance four thirty-five from nineteen ninety-six.
Thanks Kathleen, three minutes. Thank you.
Fuck you.
Any other public comments from folks out there?
Ron Mitchell.
Hey Ron, go ahead.
Uh, I've been listening very carefully. Just want everybody to know my surgery was very successful, I'll be back in shape in about two days.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I am very concerned that, uh, the property owners, including myself, uh, are represented and should be represented. And it's similar to what Kathleen has said, there's so much misrepresentation out there that I think a voice and a significant voice needs to be included for the property owners. Thank you very much.
Thanks Ron, glad surgery went well. Any other comments out there?
Um, I, I wondered if I could ask Melody Baumhover to also, um, Melody, if you're willing to and you're willing for me to put you on the spot. Cause you had asked specifically at our last SAB meeting about whether or not there would be SAB representation for this CBD development team. And I was just wondering if you wanted to speak more about that or add your thoughts.
Um, sure, I, I am planning on, uh, writing a longer letter to you guys. I have, um, a lot of thoughts about it in general, um, but as far as from the sustainability perspective, you know, it's really written into all of our planning documents, even going back to prior to twenty thirteen, uh, plan. Because I believe that plan was just an update as well. And it seems like code-wise, a lot of that stuff has not really been, uh, written in, has not gone forward. So I think it would behoove us to really have a sustainability professional, whether that's somebody that's on the sustainability advisory board or somebody who's specifically a sustainability engineer that can assist us on this Tiger team to really make sure that that aspect of it is fully considered.
Thanks, Melody.
Thanks, Melody. Any other public comments out there?
Scott Pappich.
Oh, Scott. Go ahead, Scott.
Hey guys, um, I would like to try to help this group and this team as it forms up. Set expectations for itself. I, I, I know that a lot of people have lists of what they want the town to be and what they want for their properties and their businesses and everything else. But every single thing that gets done in every community is always a negotiation and a compromise and hopefully a move to improve. And we recognize that there's things about our codes and our regulations that don't exactly match what people in this town want it to be. So as we move forward with this, let's, let's do it in a positive manner. And let's remember that every, every decision that gets come to by this team is going to be the result of, um, hopefully studying a little deeper, having more clarity, having more complete discussions and then coming to agreements. Because even the constitution was a compromise and a negotiation, right? So let's, let's expect to do better, but nobody will get perfection. We're going to get something that's better for the community, right? Thanks for hearing me.
Thanks Scott. Any other comments? If not, um, we'll go ahead and close the public comment part of this item and bring it back to the board.
Something I just wanted to real quick, um, clarify, um, cause Kathleen, you brought this up of, hey, there's other parts of the code, like why would we just focus on the CBD? The CBD is the initial focus, but because we'd be going through also the comprehensive plan and having that, I, I think one of the things that this board has identified and that we're kind of, you know, realizing didn't always happen with the previous comprehensive plans is that we make sure that those other pieces of the comprehensive plan get codified. And so while the CBD is the initial focus, that does not mean we will ignore the rest of the code. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks.
As we put out potential RFPs, it might be a good idea to make, uh, sustainability a key feature of what we're looking for.
Thank you.
We have a lot of agenda items tonight.
Yeah, so I'm just going to go back, uh, you can all look at the questions before the board and, um, if you feel like there's any final comments you want to make or a guidance towards specific guidance, now's the time. I gave my initial comments on, on the ordinance, you know, and it looked like someone else did, so I saw they went into the edits that are in front of us.
So yeah, I guess that would, um, I think there's also an outstanding question. Miranda, you're also wanting to know how much to budget for the consultants?
Well, I think at this point you're going comprehensive plan, so you're going two hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's okay, so that's taken care of for you. I just want to make sure we're getting your.
Unless you want to go more, but that's, that's pretty, after talking to Dola, who this is, Energy Minister always use for a lot of comprehensive plans. He said that's really what we need to budget for.
Okay. I guess before we close this down, if there were any other comments on ordinance eight thirty-eight, I think that's the only other big important thing that I want to make sure that we scratch off the list for today.
I'm happy with it.
I am too, I made edits and someone else, at least one or more people did, because I like all the edits.
I think everyone's gone through an edit.
Yep.
Anything, any other outstanding concerns that we need to address with that before it goes before the Planning Commission? Cause that is the next step on March fifteenth.
I'll see it on the other side.
All right, well, that was the easy one then. Okay, then I think if I read through the rest of them, Miranda, we're good with the rest of the questions?
Yep.
All right, thank you, everyone.
And I just want to take a moment to thank Bill and Derek for joining us, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, thanks for coming up here, Bill. Appreciate it, thanks Derek.
Thanks for having me.
So from here, we're going into two action items to, um, to continue of, uh, does anyone, do we need a break? What's everyone doing? Okay, you can take breaks, I tend to, if I need to take a break during it, I just log it onto my phone and take it, take it with me. So congressionally, action item eight point one, congressionally directed spending on second bridge funding. I, I do mute it, yeah. Usually, might be hot mic, I don't know.
Let's do this, let's build a second bridge.
All right, Miranda.
All right, so we, congressionally directed spending was released again. Just a reminder, these are the funds that we got for Big Springs Egress. So in essence, they're just a mechanism for members of Congress to fund very specific projects. As town staff, we got together, talked about all these different options, really kind of narrowed into what are the projects that may not be funded under other avenues? Like some transportation things, there's tip projects, water sewer can go, come under IIJA. And we just thought the second bridge through town is just one of those projects that doesn't often meet criteria for other grants. So we feel we should go for that. We have Nathan Scalick online with us tonight who can speak a little bit more to this. But if many members of the Board of Trustees did a tour of the different locations in town, we gave you a map of where those are. That's not the conversation tonight, though, that's not a part of this. It was just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. We are asking that we go forward for three point five million dollars for a feasibility study and the building of the bridge. Now we realize that's a very shocking number and the reason we're going, we're going high, because you can always not spend all the money and give it back. But three point five felt really appropriate for us. And, um, what we should go forward, the thing is, like Big Springs Egress, there's a twenty-five percent match. So you're looking at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Again, this opportunity doesn't come around very often. I spoke with Congressman Nagus's office, that he thinks that they think it's great. Commissioner Levy thinks it's great, they're both willing to support us and provide the letter of support we need to go for this. So we're asking you, if you give us the green light to apply. And again, Nathan is on, um, to answer any questions about kind of the, the resources that we put in the packet that he helped to prepare for us.
Thank you. Any, well, actually, should we, does Nathan have anything to present or just?
No, I think he's here to help answer questions, I don't know Nathan, do you have anything to present?
I don't, uh, no, I really don't have anything to present and I apologize for that. You know, I think we just met last Monday to kind of talk about this grant opportunity and we saw it as a good avenue. So, you know, I think in terms of overall budgeting for the bridge, um, I, I will admit it is on the high side and, and that was put together at this point, uh, last week. We've got until this Friday to essentially, um, complete the grant. So we're looking at kind of turning this around in less than two weeks. But, um, you know, initially that, you know, we always kind of strike, you know, we, we want to get the sticker shock out of the way and then we can refine the approach later. After the bridge walk, which I did also attend with, uh, town staff and some BOT members and other folks, um, you know, we, we walked to four different sites. And be, because there's really, you know, a lot on the table in terms of different locations, um, we didn't want to sell ourselves short in terms of, you know, if, if, you know, one of the four options was selected over the other. Now I do know that there are, um, more feasible options than others, but I think, again, we wanted to be able to cover any basis that, uh, based on, uh, you know, the access to the area, um, or just, um, any of the, the grading or ecological considerations that would be involved with the, um, you know, with the bridge, whether it's option one, two, three, four. And I think everybody can see that the figure that was put into the packet, it's, it's really just a generic location, just to kind of document the, the field walk that we did. And, um, as of, uh, the budget, uh, when that was put together last Friday, um, to make sure it got into this board meeting, at that point, I hadn't received really any feedback from any of the local, uh, bridge suppliers and, and what we were looking at were some prefabricated options, which we thought would be very suitable for the bridge. And since then, I actually did get some feedback today, at least in terms of material now, in, in terms of installation, and construction costs, that's still something that we'd have to account for. And there is a lot that would, um, you know, I think the study approach of, you know, just determining, you know, the location and then, you know, dealing with the, um, the various, uh, requirements that we'd have to go through in terms of, um, designing the bridge. Obviously, we would be crossing, um, a FEMA identified flood plain, um, that always serves a few red flags and we'd, we'd have to approach that. There are environmental constraints just due to the ecological, um, you know, river system that's running through the area that we want to take into consideration. And then there's also kind of the, you know, the, the overarching theme of the town. You know, I think initially it's, you know, without knowing what the ultimate purpose is. And again, I was, I think we're kind of spitballing here, so I, I do agree, we are probably running on the high side of the budget. But, you know, what does the bridge serve? Is it a pedestrian walkway? Is it emergency egress only, um, just in the event that, uh, you know, we need to open up another second access to get out of town, running north to south? Is it a two-lane road that can serve as both? Or does it really, you know, complete the whole, um, picture where it provides, um, a second north-south access through town? That could provide, you know, just daily traffic, um, egress as well for emergency vehicles and support pedestrians walking back and forth. You know, between, uh, you know, Business Development District and kind of the Big Springs area or, um, Old Town, wherever the site was chosen. Now I do think there are some of the options that are more advantageous to others. I think, you know, based on, you know, the walk that we did, I felt there were kind of two options in the middle. Obviously, when we get down to, um, Barker Meadows Reservoir, um, we'd be dealing with City of Boulder and that existing pedestrian bridge, which not the best place to put cars over. And then you've got Wolf Tong Lodge, um, further to the west, which would, would also be kind of the outlier as well. So again, we're kind of accounting for those worst-case scenarios. And I think realistically, um, what the town would, would be looking for would be something, uh, you know, more accessible to all and in an area that's not kind of, uh, you know, outside town limits or requires extensive grading or rework or private easements, um, you know, outside of the area. So I, I'm, I'm willing to kind of try to talk to it and, um, kind of talk in more detail. And I, like I said, I, I, I hope that, uh, we can refine this approach as we go forward. But again, I think the goal here was not to sell ourselves short, give us room to complete a study and, um, you know, try to meet the expectations of the town. And I think at this point, at least in my mind, you know, not having a whole lot of feedback, you know, the feedback is really what is going to help, you know, determine these decisions and, um, really refine that cost and help us understand what, what the town wants to see, what is desired for not just the, the current situation, but for all future considerations, um, you know, are we looking, you know, one year down the road? Are we looking ten, twenty, thirty years down the road in terms of what, um, what this bridge will potentially support? So, um, yeah, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And if I can't answer them, I'd be happy to follow up, um, as we, as we kind of dig into this a little bit more.
Mayor Billy, can I just add one thing before comments? I think maybe, obviously this feels fast and I know there's always been kind of some criticism of like, oh, town moves grants so fast. This opened on the twenty-first of February and it's due on March tenth. And they do it on purpose, they do it to make sure like you're ready to go. So our team found out about it that day, we jumped on a meeting where we learned more about it that Friday, we met the next Monday, like our team moved quickly. And so I do appreciate all the support Nathan provided us under this very fast timeline to even get this submitted.
Yeah, great job. I mean, I learned about it when I met with Claire Levy on the twenty-fourth. And after the lunch meeting, I called you and you're like, yeah, we just finished watching a webinar we found out three days ago. And she had forwarded it to you as well. So, you know, the quick turnaround, it, it apparently is what it is, because it did seem pretty huge and pretty fast and furious. But, um, appreciate that we got, that they're good about communicating with you all and thanks for getting on it. And thanks Nathan and your team for helping, um, as we fill out the application. And I am going to, for what is, I'm, just by coincidence, I'm getting, I'm going to DC next week with my company. We have a board of directors meeting, then we're going to meet with people on the Hill, um, to our senators and our, and Joan Nagus. I will meet with them, so we're going to be plugging ResNet and Energy Efficiency and hers ratings. But I will also be bringing my, um, Netherlands business cards and, and definitely mentioning this, this application. And anything else you guys want me to tell, to them about?
Yeah, I'm hugely in favor. You know, when we were talking with Congressman Nagus about the egress for Big Springs, this was something that I tried to bring up every other sentence was like, if you fund this egress, it's great, but doesn't really do all that much unless you build us a second bridge. So this is, I think, is exactly what we should use earmarks for, or whatever they're calling, CDS, you know, it's earmarks, uh, just the new earmarks, right? And this, this is the perfect project for it. So I think exactly what we should do. think exactly what we should do. I don't have any sticker shock. What I do have is just concern budget wise, are we competitive, uh, considering that we would need to come up with an $875,000 match?
Well, you just invested in SeaSafe 1.5 million. So I mean, I guess I don't know what you, you quite mean. You obviously have the funds available.
That's what I'm asking.
You're probably gonna pull them out of SeaSafe to make that happen. Um, but similar to Big Springs, you know, Big Springs ends up being a multi-year project, right? So then we break that 700,000 down into three years. You're likely gonna look at something very similar here where it's not like we gotta come to the table with 875,000. We could fund it over time.
Yeah, I do, I'm just, I'm, it's really just for me to know how high to get my hopes. Like I think we should do this.
Yeah.
One way or the other, because even if we don't get it this year, I think we should do it next year and we should do it the year after, right?
I think our application is very strong. When I called Nagoo's office, when I talked to Commissioner Levy, it was kind of to your point, like this no brainer was like, especially the FEMA track and, and really they're looking for pre-disaster mitigation and preparedness funding opportunity. And we, we already said like, we're doing Big Springs, but these tie together and we have so much documentation that highlights that and the importance of that. Um, they felt they were, it was a very strong application. Um, so we're gonna submit it, you can submit it through your congressman and then both senators. So we're gonna submit it in all three avenues.
For sure.
And we were encouraged to do so, so it had more eyes on it. But the pre-disaster piece is huge and really highlighting how dangerous a situation could be if we didn't have realistic means to move people out of town quickly.
When do they start to distribute funds?
So they would start to distribute funds in October is kind of currently the plan.
That's for sure. Right.
Yeah. And we would of course then start the feasibility study.
And will the application include the locations?
So you can't actually add attachments. It's very odd. It's a Google form.
What?
It's a little different. Um, and the only attachment accepted is the letter of support from your congressman or commissioner or both.
Got it.
And that's it.
Well, that's good.
So we have to sell it in a narrative form and I think we can do that.
But just for everyone who might be listening, we're not committing to anything.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, and I, I think that's very clear where we show like, we know that there are options out there, but that's, you know, we are not by any means committing tonight or anytime soon until those feasibility studies are done. And as Nathan put in the opinion of probable cause, there's a lot of studies that need to be considered, especially given it says the flood plain is just runs throughout the whole area. So it's not just a one and done study. That is why 400,000 is budgeted for, I think it's six different studies we would need to go for.
I would like to, um, be able to consider building two bridges, the one being the, the one that Nikki pointed out, that it would be a possible pedestrian bridge into Tepita Park and as well as the one, um, that we could potentially build through Ron Mitchell's lot over to behind the BNF parking lot that would be a traffic bridge. And we already have the other two bridges. So I would like to focus efforts on those two. And I feel that both would enhance our town greatly. And then we can meanwhile lean on Boulder City to improve the Weir Bridge. And then maybe if at some point in the future, the bridge in the, on the Myertons property could be negotiated for an easement or something like that, then I feel that that bridge is very heartily constructed as is. And if it's, you know, the fourth of our just sort of nice to have bridge, it's nice to have bridge at that point. So I think if 3.2 million would be enough to cover the construction of both of those bridges, I like it. Otherwise, let's consider going higher.
3.5 or did it get shaved down to 3.2 since I looked at?
No, I mean, we're, we're recommending seeking 3.5.
Okay, 3.5. So if-
And again, that's on the high side. So it doesn't mean that that's not realistic.
Oh, the question, yeah.
You know, I, I worry about the time we have to turn it around and get it in and trying to revisit this OPC. I think 3.5 may get you a lot-
Yeah, let's start with what, what you got. Um, I don't know if we need to go to public comment, but I think there's general support from the board to move this forward, but.
And again, if there's potential for next year, there's a potential that we could apply for more funds next year if it's into that.
I hope so.
Right.
This, this was, this has been great since it's how we got Big Springs, so.
Great. Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Okay, public comment, is anyone, Kayla?
Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. Um, I am glad that the board is taking up the situation with the bridge. This has been a ball that the boards for 25 years have been kicking down the road, can, mixing my metaphors. Um, I'm here to give you my, uh, i- interest and intake and input and opinion about this. Um, years ago, I had a long conversation with Susan Schneider when she was president of the bank and we talked about the bridge at that point. If what you're trying to do is eliminate a bottlehead in the middle of town where the bridge is, where all the business is, where the traffic is going one way down First Street, the last thing you want to do is have all the cars coming into that area, then divert some of them down here and then some of them across the bridge and put the bridge here. The best place I particularly think the bridge should be, and I think it's one of your options, I haven't looked, but for those people coming into town, they go right down the road, stop at the post office, get their mail, go right in front of the teen center, go right across the bridge that would be there. You're gonna have all the people that live in Big Spring, I mean, uh, yeah, Big Springs, you're gonna have all of the people that live over at the Rollinsville. Anybody that lives on that side of town won't even need to come in and utilize the busiest. They won't even have to come to the roundabout. They won't have to come down First Street. It makes sense. Um, I would also put in a two cents for having a two-way, if the money is there, great. If not, they do a lot of bridges in Hawaii that you just stop. It's a one lane. You go across, then they'll let the other guy go across. You go across, let the other guy go across. And the idea of having a footbridge, if you're gonna do that, would be where most of the people are, which is, uh, down First Street where all the businesses are to cross. If you're gonna put a bridge across by, on Ron's property there, maybe that is where you have a pedestrian footbridge. But to have the traffic diverted, I think, is the smartest thing to do. And then you kill many, many birds with one stone. You have an act, uh, an egress for evacuation from Big Springs because you're wanting to get everything diffused as much as possible in an emergency. So the only people that are gonna be using that bridge are people that live up there. That's not gonna be where all the tourists, all the ski area, all the leaf peepers, all the campers are not gonna be using that bridge all the time. So I'm gonna just talk real slow for 10 seconds because I have that much time. And then I'm gonna say thank you for letting me speak and I appreciate you guys being here. Good night.
Thanks, Kayla. Thank you for being here. Any other public comments? See any raised hands. So hearing done, we'll close the public comments and bring it back to the board for final discussion and a motion.
Yeah, we didn't really have this as an action item. It was more, do you direct us? If you'd like to vote, that's totally fine. But I was just looking for your direction to say yes.
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 It's on here as an action item. It's got the checkbox as an action item.
Oh, I think I put it on the agenda itself as a discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a-
Oh, no, it's action. We did them flipped.
Yeah, yeah.
I move, we, uh, encourage Miranda to move this forward.
Second.
Do we need to say it officially the way it's written there? Can, can we say it in such a manner?
That was fine.
Okay.
I can work with that.
We say this is one of the official.
I'm all messed now tonight. Okay, uh, Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Let's do this.
That was unanimous, I think so, mine.
Oh, and I, that was it. I wanted-
Other than adjourning.
I wanted to thank Tanya Corvallin because she is one of the people that pushed for this to happen. Um, so, very consistently. She really got that tour. She made that tour happen and-
Yep.
So she gets a lot of credit.
Happy birthday, Tanya.
Happy birthday, Tanya. Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Um-
But also thank you so much to staff for looking out for this and hopping on it immediately because otherwise-
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to make it a reality. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Was it generally this time of year or is it just kind of random that they let you know?
I, I don't, none of us were even expecting it. So then I'll, and actually I'll take the shout out to Andrew Sparr and he was the one who kicked it to us originally. I was like, you should go after this. So-
Can you give him our thanks too?
I will, definitely. And the Public Works team, that's when we kind of brought the Public Works team and Brit together and just really discussed all the options before us. And this came out the winner.
My hopes are getting high, Eric. Just, that's why I-
Curb your enthusiasm.
Right.
Pretty good.
Well, thank you, everyone. We can, I was gonna say, talk about it, great show. Uh, we'll move on to action item number two. We're gonna need a motion here soon to extend, but I don't know how long this item's gonna take, but public engagement manager position and I think, uh-
Action item. Yes. So, um, for those of you who are a part of the 2023 budget, I had proposed this back in the supplemental budget days. Um, obviously, given the challenges of the police department before the taxes or the budget before the taxes were passed, we ended up holding this position out. Um, we feel very strongly that we need to have a public engagement manager who's responsible for ongoing communication, outreach and engagement with members of the Netherlands community as well as visitors and, and, uh, prospective visitors. As a part of the Reimagine Destinations, this came up, really the need for this dedicated staff member. It's in the workshop summary that I put in the packet. Um, I'm actually really not asking you about this position, to be fully honest. You know, staffing is an administrative decision. What I'm asking you for is to build the space for us to hire an administrative assistant so we can do some, some movement within our team itself to build out this position. And where the ask is, is that we need the funding, we need you to basically commit to the funding for that new staff member position because that's what we're building is an administrative assistant who will do really a scaled back than what Peter did. I mean, Peter has taken that position and done incredible things with it. If you look at our social media two years ago to where we are today, it's, it's incredible. And so we just, we'll, we'll go back to kind of the original, what it, what an administrative assistant always was. And, and Peter has done so much more. And post this position internally, invest in a staff member we already have, who I think has proven to be really successful in this. And, um, so really we're asking you for 59,000 that would come to you when the supplemental budget came to you. So we're not, of course, putting a supplemental before you right now. Um, but we're asking you for that, plus $2,000 for the laptop that would be needed for that role. And, and, um, I am strongly advocating for this. I think it would be an incredible addition to our team and would love that green light to hire an administrative assistant and make those internal changes.
Thanks, Miranda. Any questions for Miranda? Clarifying questions?
What's the cost for an administrative assistant like you're asking?
We are budgeting 16 to 18 an hour. So when you add in the fringe benefits, assuming they take highest benefit packages, it comes out to 58,000 and some change. So we rounded up to 59.
Plus the laptop.
Plus the laptop. So 61.
A $2,000 versus $1,000.
That's what, that's what Randy budget is for. That's typically what he puts forward for laptops. And unfortunately, due to spatial limitations, we cannot do the desktop route because we don't have any more room at Town Hall. So we're gonna have to get very creative with moving staff around. And so everyone having a laptop will be essential to that kind of probably shared space type movement we have to do within Town Hall.
Peter in the shed?
There's just too many of us. Yeah.
An iPad seems fine, but, but more seriously, uh, I think this is, this is fine. Uh, I, I would, I actually have a question for Nicole. And I wonder if you could run this by the public engagement group that you've been operating, um, at the, you know, the job description and stuff and send that feedback back to Miranda?
Yes, and I do believe one of them wrote in with the letter of support.
There was a letter of support. There was also a letter, I don't necessarily say, I would say opposition, but a letter.
To wait.
Concern. Here is, here is, uh, yes, we definitely want the feedback. I also just, you know, typically we don't bring these administrative things.
Of course not.
Before you. So I want to be really mindful that we're not now opening up all job descriptions to public scrutiny. Um, but I definitely welcome that this actual job description was developed in partnership with Reimagine Destinations and the consultant who's working with us. And so, um, we do welcome that feedback, but I, it's a fine line.
Yep.
I think in general, our public engagement committee is very supportive. Um, I think what's happened in the past is there's been either not that partnership with town or there's just, there's, you know, who is there to post something at the post office or to follow up on social media? And so for them, this is actually, you know, one of those things from Invision 2030 coming to fruition. Um, and so I think that there's, there's some-
Yeah.
There's some excitement around it.
Yeah, it's mostly just because we just started a public engagement group and then we're also hiring something that says the same thing on it. And that's the only reason, right? It's just to like, because it would be great if that group was just on board with this because it seems like right up their alley. So as long as they have the opportunity at least to say what they think about it, I think that'd be nice.
Yeah, and I think what's really neat about it is while, so just make a little shameless plug right now, uh, the library, or, or excuse me, our Netherlands Community Conversations is the first one that this public engagement committee is going to be, um, putting together. This is, you know, the hard work of Sue Wagner, Susan Wagner and, um, May Gerald. And those will be separate, um, entities, you know, that they kind of help. But there are lots of opportunities to really coordinate with this community engagement manager, um, town with BOT, you know, if BOT TV ever becomes a thing, right? Those are things that-
It's already a thing.
That would be, I think that would be that coordination across potentially all those entities, which, and you know, one of these days, maybe public engagement becomes its own advisory board as well.
Right.
And, um, because it's that important. And it's, you know, we've talked about the social connective-ish tissue amongst our town has sort of been lacking. And so, um, I think this is another step in helping to create that, that, that connective tissue.
I'm in supportive of this and I would vote yes for this right now if it were, if we could move that fast. And I'm not supportive of extending the meeting. So I'm wondering about, uh-
We have to do public comment.
All right. So, um, can we continue this item till next meeting? Because if we can, I'll make a motion to do that.
We can, um, I don't, this-
I think it's 10 o'clock, so I think you need to decide really quickly what you're doing, whether-
I'll make a motion to extend to 10:15.
Second.
Trustee Severs.
No.
Uh, Mayor Pretem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Yeah, but yeah, that being said, we can call for public comment.
Kathleen Chabai is the first.
Kathleen Chabai. Ironically, the packet has public engagement manager listed as an action item when I don't remember the public being engaged in this idea via any previous info or dis- discussion item. Oh, by the way, Ron said I could have any extra of his time on this if I needed it. I wonder if the residents think Netherlands needs a public engagement-
We're gonna stop you for three minutes, just so you know, and then if Ron wants-
A public engagement manager summary. While preparing the 2022 budget, town staff recommended the town create a public engagement manager position responsible for ongoing communication, outreach and engagement with members of the Netherlands community as well as visitors or prospective visitors to Netherlands. It sounds like staff is asking to pay someone 59,000 a year to hang out on social media all day. The current STR overregulation and tourist survey questions conveyed an aversion to tourism, and I never saw the results from the tourist, tourist survey being shared but with the community. And now from the looks of it, town wants to- And now, from the looks of it, Town wants to pay someone to try to engage with visitors and prospective visitors. The summary concludes with, since all three tax initiatives passed, placing the town in a better financial position, we are seeking to reestablish this position and post internally for current members of Town staff to apply for. Aside from the fact I don't like the language presented in the aim as facts when it is an assumption, in example, since all three tax initiatives passed, placing the town in better financial position, why is the word reestablished being used in the third sentence when Netherlands has not had a public engagement manager and is requesting to create it in the first sentence? And with the current recession inflation and economic stress nationwide people are experiencing, it is projected to become worse if anyone listened to the Federal Reserve this morning. Town Town probably shouldn't assume that since the tax increase has passed, Town will make more or even equal to previous years off in increased taxes. We won't know if there's extra money until the end of the year. And I hate to remind people, but those tax increases were intended by voters to go towards other real community needs like law enforcement or fixed roadways. I think this asks for another fifty-nine thousand for a staff where to do the work of the clerk and the administrative support manager after lessening the law enforcement money after voters pass the tax increase in hopes of at least the same or more law enforcement. And the overregulation and overtaxation of cannabis over the last decade has significantly hurt the cannabis industry. According to The Westward, Colorado marijuana prices and sales plummeted in twenty-two, down twenty-three point three percent. Last year was a full-on drought for the state's marijuana industry with the average price per pound of flowering falling sixty-two percent, the lowest total ever recorded in state history. And enactment of regulation on medical marijuana patients in twenty-one, record lows have been hit. I've been confused to the Town staff positions and duties for years now.
That's three minutes.
And and I'm taking the extra that Ron is giving me.
Ron will need to give a public comment and then pass the baton if that's actually.
No, he doesn't need to, that's in the curate, any of these last meetings.
Is that, Miranda, just a sec, calm down. Miranda, is that legit?
I mean, yeah, if Ron is on and would like to.
Yeah, Ron, could you at least state that?
And Ron, you may be muted, so you'd have to press star six.
Yes, you can have the three minutes.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Am I unmuted?
Yeah, I don't think you were muted the whole time. Go ahead, we can hear you.
You just muted yourself again.
Oh.
I've been confused to the Town staff positions and duties for years now as Town continues to make up new job titles and hire more staff. I believe the current title Peter holds is administrative support manager. Based on my seeing Peter behind the desk and handling clerical work in the Town Hall more than I do anyone else over the last two years, I assume he is currently full-time and has a salary. I would appreciate clarification to Peter's current job duties and pay, because now we have an aim in front of us from Fisher that asks to create a new position and title, agenda item, public engagement manager position, and yet the question in the aim to the BOT is, does the BOT approve budgeting for an administrative assistant, not a public engagement manager, and a laptop under the general fund? There's no mention in the agenda item of a public engagement manager position. Rarely do I disagree with Susan Wagner, but in this instance, I do not agree with her that a public, her public comment that Town needs a new staff position or that taxpayers need to pay anyone fifty-nine thousand a year to make some flyers for wildlife and fire safety for visitors or tourists. And I'm pretty confident current Town staff job descriptions include the making of public flyers. Okay, I don't understand what's happening here. And how is, what is Peter being paid right now? Is he going to take both positions? I don't understand. I I just, when Miranda introduced this earlier, she just said something about we're trying to clarify that she is seeking a public assistant position. So what is the public engagement manager position gonna be paid? I I just don't understand this. I don't understand why it's an action item. I'm really disappointed, because I've been pointing out for a long time that we need to organize our own foundational documents. Okay, I just went into the storage unit, the boxes are mismarked, what's there, there's significant amounts missing, specifically code-related that are supposed to be permanently retention of those documents, they're not there. I don't believe we need public engagement. I believe we need to work and fix our foundational records. I can't believe this. I can't believe this is an action item. I'm really disappointed, and thank you, Ron, for your minute.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Tanya.
Tanya.
I I'm just gonna, I say that I do agree, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I I do agree with a number of things that that Kathleen has brought up. And I see another side of this. So that aside, I would just like to point out as a member of the public that I'm getting awfully tired in these meetings of hearing the banter about whether or not you need public comment. You are representing the public, and I would like to see more of that occur.
Thanks, Tanya. Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll bring it back for a discussion and a motion.
I motion to approve this request.
Second.
Miranda?
Sorry, let me write this down. Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I do.
And, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one, one other, other business comment, and that is that after our vote on police funding, I have had extensive conversations with every one of us, save Nicole. And I am considering, reconsidering at an upcoming meeting. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that we were a split board. It feels really good for us to all vote unanimously, even though I don't think that it's necessarily our you know, doesn't necessarily need to be our our goal at all times, is to find consensus. I think our objective is to make decisions and to make them in a timely manner. And I don't necessarily mind when we're split. However, this is an item that we've been wrestling with for many months. It has a lot of really strong feelings in the community. And I feel there's merit in, well, I'm considering reconsidering is is all I'm getting at. So I will be continuing to discuss with many of you offline as well as taking input from the public over the next time period, and we'll keep you posted.
Thanks, thanks, Jesse. I'll be putting out a statement to him, replying to Chris Kelly, a statement on, hopefully going to Montney this Thursday about my logic behind option C and no animal control, so I'll be out there for the public to read, too.
If you put one out for option C, is it okay for me to write one about option B?
Yeah, you, you'll have to talk to them, but I was asked.
Okay, I I'm, I'm gonna.
Sure.
I'll write something, too.
Sure.
Yeah, I I don't think that you've got a pulpit, but I don't, I think there's other points of view.
Yeah.
There are, I was just asked specifically for a statement about my choice to go with option C.
What's to me?
Famous German.
Oh, I've motioned to a churn.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at ten eleven P M.
Yes. Net executive session was awesome.